Well, anyway, it's 7 o'clock. It's time to start the meetings.
Do we have a forum?
Yeah, who's in attendance here?
So, in the room with me right now is Ann, Donna, and Bruce.
Good. Okay, and who is on line?
Kevin.
Shannon.
Kevin, Shannon.
Diane.
Diane. Okay, so we have, um, Mike missing. So, we need one alternate for Mike. So, let's, let's appoint Diane unless Mike comes on. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so we've got Diane, Bruce, Donna, Ann, Kevin, and me. Right, Mike?
You're right.
Okay, um, well, there's still no picture. That's too bad. It was a good picture that time I looked at it. Um, okay, now, uh, we've got the appointment of the alternates. Um, approval of the minutes of March 2nd. I have, um, a comment, and that is that, um, Item 4, the Regulation Workshop, um, should not have meeting minutes kept. That disrupts or impacts, uh, discussion of things and, um, shouldn't, shouldn't be recorded. There are no decisions being made, uh, no, no motions being made. So, I believe that we should strike Item 4 in the minutes. How much from anybody else?
We did talk about setting the hearing dates, though, unless that's just discussion.
Well, at that point, I think it's still just discussion. We didn't vote on anything.
That's correct.
So, until, until we vote to set the hearing date, um, it's discussion. And, and you're right, we shouldn't do anything that does, uh, has an official status. But when you're carrying in a discussion about, um, things that, uh, go back and forth and people change their mind in arguments, um, I don't, I don't think, uh, that it's fruitful to have that, all of that laid out. And I don't think it's required by Robert rules for sure. Robert rules specifically, um, offers a recommendation that such things not be included. Anyway, any other comments?
Yeah, let me add two things. One is that I think it's valuable, to tell you the truth, but I'm not complaining that we don't have minutes or any notes of previous discussions of the regulations date, but we also have a set of procedural rules for the conduct, the conduct of our business as zoning commission. There are rules and we're free to change them, but I'm quite sure that they call for, in fact, I have a meeting, they call for minutes of the meetings, but we pay so little attention to them.
Bruce, I'm not able to hear you very well. Is anybody else here?
No, he's choppy. I didn't know, I thought it was Mike.
Bruce, can you, can you repeat, um, what you said?
What I said is that I'm not objecting to the fact that we have no minutes of our prior discussions about regulation changes, but I do find it valuable to have the ones from the last meeting. And I also point out that, uh, we have a set of regulations and rules that we are sort of committed to abide by, but we ignore. They're the procedures for the zoning commission. And they call for minutes of the meetings. So, you know, we haven't paid any attention in the past, generally speaking, so I don't know that we need to worry too much about it now, but, uh, we do have a set of regulations that call for them. You know, they're not exactly bylaws, but they are adopted regulations that set out the protocol for our meetings. So, with that being said, I think it's a...
I thought that we were...
The chairman really has some latitude here because, uh, I know our, our protocol allows for the consideration of the, uh, Robert's rules as a guide, a framework or guideline. It's not cast in concrete.
Hello?
You know, I don't see anything in these, uh, discussions that would inhibit anybody from making comments, but I think, uh, you know, whether they were included in the minutes or not, in this case is a little moot. But in the future, I think we should make clearer that when we have a workshop, the discussions, um, should be taken within that workshop and not published.
Well, maybe we could consider adjourning the meeting and then convening a discussion...
A workshop.
Well, maybe...
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
So, Tom?
Hello?
Tom, is this Tom Ryan?
Tom, Tom.
All right, yeah, hold on, Tom. We're, we're on meeting minutes. You're up next.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sorry, Dave.
So, I'd, I'd be happy to consider the minutes as they're submitted, um, with the thought that next time we should be more careful.
Okay, I'll second that.
Who was that, Kevin?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it carries 6-0. Okay, we've got our minutes to drop to the appointment. Um, the next order of business is, uh, the application. And Tom, for, um...
Yes.
This Item 4 is listed as a public hearing, but this is a site plan amendment which doesn't require a public hearing. Am I not correct?
You're correct. Yeah, it's an error in the agenda. It should be, should be under, uh, old business. So...
Okay, well, we, we can, um, can make a motion to adjust the minutes to delete the public hearings and to put Application 20-02 under old business. Somebody make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I move we amend the agenda to put, um, Application 20-02, uh, under, uh, new applications and delete public hearing section.
Is this new application or amendment? Mike, should it go under, uh, old business?
Old business, old business. This is a live application.
Okay, can you amend your motion?
Oh, to old, oh, then we move it to old business.
Okay. Just a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, who's that?
Diane.
Diane.
Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, it carries 6-0. Now, uh, let's go forward with Application 20-02 of Thomas Ryan. I think he's on the phone too, right?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So, now we're not going to have any visuals.
No.
We're a little stuck here without SCTV to show us the pictures.
So... If you, if you have access to your, to the computer on, in your packet, you go to, uh...
Oh, you're right.
20 dash, if you go to ZZ 20-02, it gives you the plans for this, uh, it's, it's, it's labeled Exhibit 2, and it illustrates the fire escape stairs that are being proposed. And Tom, maybe you can tell the commission why, why you have to do this?
Um, yeah, uh, the Fire Marshal has, is requiring this to be done. Uh, you know, it's on the, um, I guess the south side of the Berkshire Hathaway Building. Um, and, uh, it's, I, you know, it was prior to our, we, we purchased the property five years ago come May, and I guess we, we found out shortly before our closing that this was a requirement. So, we've been, you know, talking about it and fiddling with it ever since. So, um, at any rate, they, uh, they, they want it done, and these were the plans that were previously approved, uh, by the, uh, the prior owner.
Was it approved by the...
Approved by the Fire Marshal. Approved by the Fire Marshal.
Yeah, so these plans never came to the commission. It was discussed...
They never came to the commission.
Correct.
That's right.
It was discussed, basically, to, to, to address the order of the Fire Marshal. This has been going on, as Tom said, goes back to 2014, 2013 is when, uh, the Fire Marshal was first involved with this. And really, it, what's triggering it is that there's offices on the second floor, and they need a second means of egress. This is the only location on the building where they can get a, a fire stairwell to serve the second floor. Cause, cause Tom has tried to investigate other options, but unfortunately, due to the nature of the building, uh, the layout of the site, it just, it didn't work. So, this is right now the one that, that fulfills the, the intent of the Fire Code. And like he said, he's under order, he has to do this work.
The Fire Marshal, okay.
That window, that window will be placed with a door.
Okay, um, do any commissioners have any comments on this?
I have a question regarding the design review boards recommendation. They're actually saying the spindles can be white vinyl if approved by the Fire Marshal. Um, would that be... By Mr. Ryan, because normally you don't put vinyl with older buildings.
Well, yeah, no, it's, uh, I, I think, you know, and Mike, Mike can, uh, add, uh, to this. Um, they've sort of deferred to Mike, uh, on a design standpoint. They want to see as much white as possible. Um, and ultimately, uh, we may just have to paint the entire structure after the wood seasons. Um, as I'm told, pressure treated takes about six months or, or an entire season, and then it can be painted, uh, white. So, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll, I, you know, assuming that, that this is approved, um, we're gonna work with Mike. What I was intending to do is to set up a meeting with, um, Kevin or Patrick and, uh, Mike, and also my contractor, uh, and sort of look closely at the plans and, and, and find out, you know, which, what's, what's acceptable to everyone. So, is it, is it your concern that you just don't like to see shiny vinyl?
Well, I'm, I'm actually, vinyl is, is not a lot, is, is, is recommended against in the design review guidelines, so I'm kind of surprised that Design Review would actually advocate vinyl, um, when it's against their guidelines. And then, so that's one thing. And then, second, um, when you're using the, um, the National, um, the Interior Department does not recommend, you know, vinyl with historic buildings.
Well, this is not a, this is not a, this is not a...
Well, it's a historical building, it's not on the register, but it's a historical building, and so I think it's...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a mistake to put vinyl stairw, spindles on a historical building.
Yeah. Kevin, what...
I think it's a mistake to, I, I think it's a mistake to put this thing on the side of the building in general.
Well, I'll go along with that one.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't, unfortunately, I've fought that battle, so...
Yeah, and unfortunately, the, the, the reason why the vinyl coat came up from the DRB was, their concern was, since he's using pressure-treated lumber, that for a year, potentially a year, you had something out there that was not treated so that it's white, blends in with the building. I mean, their big thing is they didn't want to, this to jump out at you, that you have this fire escape off the building. If there was attempts to kind of shield it by either painting it white or the, the vinyl was, was something that was discussed by a few members of saying, "Well, it's a quick fix. The vinyl's gonna be there, so therefore it's white. You may not see it."
Yeah, I would, I would make a recommendation that we go, don't go with the vinyl spindles.
So, so Kevin, then maybe you would recommend that it be painted white instead?
Yeah, yeah, in time. I mean, if we have to go a year, that's okay.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on this, Bruce? Donna?
No, I, I agree with Kevin, though.
You agree with Kevin, okay. Um, Diane?
Excuse me, is the concern, primary concern, uh, just the fact that, you know, uh, as a rule, vinyl is shiny and will stand out, um, is if there's, if we can get a material that's not shiny, then it, it may blend in. If not, we might have to just wait and paint the spindles, you know, after the age.
And the spindles may not be, um, pressure-treated? I understand why other structure needs to be, but the spindles may, you may not find that they're pressure-treated wood.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, so if that's the case, then you could actually paint real wood. But the idea behind, when you're dealing with historic buildings is you want to go natural. Natural materials, not, not artificial materials.
No, yeah, I mean, what we're, and what we're also trying to do here is to, uh, the objective is to keep, there are two trees there on that side of the building, and one's a rather large, uh, evergreen, which doesn't have a lot of, uh, cover, if you will, uh, in the first, let's say, 12, 15 feet. But there's another tree to the left that at least does provide some natural cover. And I had my landscaper, uh, come over, and we're, we're, we definitely want to try to save that tree, trim it, so, again, so that we can, uh, we can offer some natural fencing, you know, to the structure. It's gonna be a fix to the side. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can to move the, the entrance down as far as we possibly can, uh, you know, um, coming out so that, again, it's further to the right and behind that tree. So, uh, you know, I, I'd rather, I, I don't want this thing just to jump out. That's, it, it, it does, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's, it's not gonna look very attractive, because it's just, you know, a, a, a white, you know, fire stair, or, or a, a fire staircase coming down. In addition to being, have some kind of white, uh, you know, look to it, we also want to make sure that there's, you know, that we try to save those trees the best we can.
Well, we encourage you to do that. And what's not clear from the plan, are you replacing that window with a door?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, there is, there's a window there, uh, and that's, uh, and we're, there's another window to the right, further down. And if we could, if, if we can move the door down a little further, then, again, we might shift the structure down to the right, and it, it would be more behind the tree on the left-hand side. So, we're, we're gonna try to do that, but I think we're gonna have to, you know, see how that works out after we meet with the Fire Marshal and, uh, and, uh, we've, Henry has already looked at the plans, the building inspector, and, and he, he only had one issue. It's on, on the riser. I think the risers are, I don't know, seven inches or, and he wanted seven and a half or, or just the opposite. He had no other issues. So, I still want to bring Henry into the mix, you know?
And on the lower level, where you have the windows on the first floor?
Right.
How far, how far away from the building is the stairway?
Uh, let me see. I'm not completely sure, to be honest with you. I have to get, we have to get back.
Okay, all right, that's okay. I was just wondering, you know, because visually from inside, it's gonna be kind of...
Oh, yeah.
Unattractive to see the stairway coming down over those nice windows.
No, I, I agree, absolutely. You know, it's the manager's office there, and I think the conference room, so, that's, you know? But, but that, that part, that row of windows, one, two, three, four, is about five or six windows there, that, that's indented a little bit. So, there is, there's a little bit of space in, in between the structure and, and at least those windows. Um, but, you know, it's gonna be there. Something you can do about it, you know? So...
It's sort of like the Corona, coronavirus. We just gotta live with these.
Well, we're gonna try to make the best that we can out of it, you know, because it's, we, we, it's here, it's gotta get done, so we'll, we, we want to blend it in. I don't want people driving down Hot Meadow, uh, you know, towards the center of town, and first thing they, once they go to pass the funeral home, the first thing they see is this, you know? So, anyway.
Okay, um, Diane, did you have a comment?
Um, no, I do not. I, I don't think that he has, uh, I, I, no, I have no comment. I think this, this is as good as you're gonna get, so yes, I'm, no comment.
Okay, I think, my opinion is that the, the application or the, the owner has done everything to recognize, um, uh, the visual impact of this thing, and I think we ought to leave it to him to choose how it's done. And we can say that it should be white, but I think we shouldn't be engineering it.
Yeah, and, and just, and just for the record, uh, the design review people, they've, they've kind of passed the ball to Mike, so I'll, I'll be working with Mike to make sure that, uh, you know, that we all accomplish the same objective. I think we're on the same page.
Okay, any more comments from Bruce or Donna or Kevin?
Well, are, are we approving the drawings as submitted, or, because it does say wood pickets on the drawings.
You could, you could approve, you can approve it, you could, in your approval, adopt DRB's referral with the exception to number three, that just say that the handrail and spindles shall be painted white, period.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's up to us. Mike, did you make a recommendation? The staff have a recommendation here?
I, I, I did not on this one, because I figured it was, you know, this is the only thing really that would debate on whether you wanted to get in the weeds on the design on it.
Yeah, I think, I think we should approve it with the stipulation that the things be white and let the, um, staff and the applicants decide how to meet that.
Fine, and we'll, we'll work with Mike in that, in that regard.
Kevin, is that okay with you?
Um, not really. I don't think it should be vinyl.
I know, but I don't think it's our role to specify materials.
Um, it can be our role.
Only if they put it on a, on a site plan and we approve it.
Only if they put it on a what?
Which is what we're doing.
They put it on a site plan, we can require it.
Is, is your concern, is the concern just the spindles?
Yeah, yeah, we just don't want the vinyl.
Okay, well, then, there's, the other thing that, that might be a possibility is that if you look at some of the, uh, the facing, uh, there's, you know, there's a, there's a product that you can cut and attach to the wood without painting it. I have it on my own house, underneath my deck, and I, I can't tell that, you know, that it's, it's not shiny and it, uh, it looks like, I never have to paint it, and it looks very nice.
Azac, that's what he's talking about.
It's like a hardy plank thing?
Is it vinyl product? I'm not sure.
The ERB is requiring that on the columns and the stairs.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got too many people speaking here. Uh, Tom, can you hold off for a second? Who would speak? Was that Donna?
I was just inquiring where there was like a... Yes, it is Donna. A, a hardy plank or a composite material that, and, and, um, Mike was indicating that Design Review wanted the columns faced in something like that.
They asked that the columns and the, that the stair structure be faced with Azac.
Correct, that's it.
So, that's what the mater, it's a composite material that kind of looks like saw, it's...
It looks like a smooth finish.
Yeah.
But it's not shiny.
It is not like the vinyl caps that they were proposing. It's actually probably the opposite. Um, it's more of a, like, if this was in a historic district, I, like East Sweet Talk Street, this would be an, a appropriate material as an alternative to, to use.
Mike, do we have any other, since we don't have a suggestive, um, motion here, or is there other things that we need to add to a motion?
No, just the only thing would be is the, the issue on the white, on the spindles, if you want it, you want to put that, um, you, or you could just say, the, adopt the DRB recommendations if you want, with the exception of number three, and that is administrative zoning permits required for the construction of the stairs.
Okay, Kevin, I'd be happy if you made a motion. I'll live with it.
All right, all right. I'll make a motion regarding Application 12. Now, I gotta go back and find out what, uh, 20...
20-02.
20-02.
Um, let's see. Regarding 920 Hot Meadow Street, um, that we approve the application, um, with the recommendations of the Design Review Board, except for their recommendation number three, where they're calling for, um, vinyl spindles, that prefer to see them be natural wood, and that, two, that the, a zoning, um, administrative zoning permit is required prior to construction.
Okay, do we have a second?
So, can we just specify that natural wood doesn't mean in color?
Oh, in white, yeah.
Yeah.
Natural wood painted white?
Or, or painted white.
Painted white, okay.
Okay, second?
Second by Donna? Any further discussions?
Just let me make sure I got this, though. This is, Kevin, you're trying to offer other options to exist here. You've called for that as, to identify the wood painted white as a preference, not as a requirement. Is that right?
Well, yeah, um, okay, that, that the, that the spindles be wood instead of vinyl as...
Okay.
Recommended by the DRB.
Gotcha.
Any further clarifications? No more comments?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? It carries 6-0. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, I appreciate your input very much.
Yeah. Have a good night.
All right, thanks, Mike. Have a nice evening.
You're welcome, Tom. Thank you.
All right, all right, bye now.
This isn't really easy, is it?
No, it's not.
But it is nicer to look out and see all the, all the yachts outside my window. Sorry, guys.
Where are you?
I'm in Florida, Stewart.
Oh! Lucky you.
It's on West West.
See Lucy River with, uh, I don't know, several million dollars where the boats floating around.
Fantastic.
It's good, but I don't get to ride it any. Anyway, I get to look. Um, okay, our next order of business is the new application. Is there anything to do on that?
There should be, uh, there should be a representative of Big Y on the phone with us. John, are you here?
Hi, yes, sir. John Renzi, Impact Science, representing Big Y Foods.
So, Big, Big Y went before DRB? So Big, Big Y went before DRB earlier this, this evening. The Design Review Board, uh, sent a favorable recommendation to the board. We can go over the sign package, John, if you want to go take it over?
Sure. Um, we've submitted a signed calculation, um, for all of the signage. The building frontage is 272 linear feet. Uh, our allowance is 272 square feet of signage. We proposed the signage at 271.59 square feet. Uh, we proposed a monument sign that would be round illuminated at 32 square feet, 10 foot overall height, meets the zoning criteria. We proposed a, an identification sign on the building that would be halo illuminated. It would be 144 square feet. And then we have some smaller non-illuminated letters on the front of the building that would accumulate to 95.59 square feet. They would be non-illuminated. And that adds up to the 271.5 main square feet, as presented to the Design Review Board and received favorable consideration.
Okay. Questions of the commission?
Yeah. The, um, Ms. Kevin, the Big Y sign that's in the, in the window area, um, that is aluminum, so it's not see-through?
That is correct. We have, it's mounted to glass mullions, if you would. And because the illumination needs to be halo, we needed to create a solid surface for the halo lighting to reflect back onto. So if you look at, um, page five of the renderings, it shows you the night view of what the halo lighting would be.
It's up on the screen right now.
Uh, okay. All right. No, it's just because we were a little surprised once we approved a sign like that and you could, it ended up being backlit or internally illuminated because it was translucent. And I just wanted to make
I've worked well with your team, uh, within the town to make sure that we designed the sign package around meeting the zoning criteria. And it's been reviewed by personnel that assured me that we were in the right, going in the right direction.
And there's several versions of the locally owned. Which one is the final?
Okay. It's going, what they, uh, what Big Y has chosen, because we were limited in square footage, it was going to be, uh, American family owned. Then it was going to be locally owned since 1936. We reduced it just to locally owned because they wanted to add to the word seafood to be sustainable seafood. They felt that that had more value. So we had to move square footage around to fall within the, um, the calculations for the total square footage. So the, the final rendering should be the revision dated 3/11/20, which is locally owned.
That's what's up.
Okay. Because that one also refers to American owned in the text under B.
Um, in the calculations?
No, I don't know. It just says quantity and then it says non-illuminated, American owned, which contradicted what's actually in the visuals.
Yeah, the, the, I'm looking at everything dated March 11th. It is, it is, um,
It's on page four in the, um, in the small print. I can see what he's referring to. It's, uh, C, quantity one, storefront halo illuminated. If you look down, you can see American owned.
Okay, yes. Okay. I see what you're saying. Yes. No, the, uh, the choice is locally owned.
Yeah. All right. So it's locally owned. And then, um, as part of your review by Design Review, did they give you some difficulty over the text of your advertising?
None whatsoever.
Okay. So they didn't follow their guidelines again?
I'm, I'm not sure what guidelines you're talking about.
Well, we don't, their, their guidelines say the signage shouldn't be advertising. It's, it's, signs are to identify a business, not to identify Superbird.
Okay. I, I, I tailored, um, my sign package around what, uh, you know, we felt was with their design, Big Y's design. We also know diagonally across the street is a, I think it's M&amp;M Automotive. And over each door, they've got signs that, uh, you know, have different things that they do too. So, um, we didn't feel that having this was something that wouldn't be allowed.
Those are, the Design Review guidelines are guidelines and they are not mandatory.
No, but they're good guidelines. Um, because Superbird, you know, I, you, otherwise, you know, with other stores, we've, you know, allowed bakery and bank because they're, they're, they make sense. But Superbird, I'm not so sure. And what's the sushi one?
Well, we did, we did look at, uh, at this whole project and started out with just one large Big Y sign with the world-class market and at that time, American family owned. Uh, we've reduced that halo illuminated sign from 225 square feet down to 104 square feet. Uh, we felt that the board would look favorable to, um, decreasing any type of illumination and adding more non-illuminated.
Any others, any other comments about this?
Uh, let me just ask a question.
Bruce, Donna?
Is this an original, sort of, are these concepts original to, uh, this building? Or if we go over and look at Big Y in Torrington or Glastonbury?
Actually, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. During the Design Review Board, uh, a member or two had mentioned how this fit the same look that the Southwick location has. And they felt that it was very tastefully done. So this, this is the new architecture for their new buildings. This is, this is, they actually have more departments they, they actually would like to list, but we are limited to a certain amount of square footage and so therefore we've limited the amount.
Okay, Bruce?
I, I heard the answer. I'm not, I'm not responding to it's okay, but I, I heard the answer.
Okay. Donna?
Um, I don't have any questions.
Donna, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Diane?
Um, no, I just want to clarify, uh, I, my hearing is not as great. Uh, you said that you met with Design Review earlier today and they had no objections. They were happy with it as, as it stands?
Absolutely, yes. And they did reference, and they liked the way the Southwick location looked, which is exactly what we have here, but more of a department signage than we proposed.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay. Mike, does, uh, staff have a recommendation?
Uh, it meets your regs. Uh, so I'd recommend approval with the caveat that an administrative zoning permit is required and that the, the Big Y logo that's referenced B on their, uh, sheet four of eight, that it be reverse halo lit, kind of just to reaffirm Kevin's concerns from a previous internally lit sign that we have in town.
Okay. That's not specified?
It should have been uploaded to the packet. Hold on.
It says storefront halo illuminated.
Yeah, it's, it's, you're, you're right. It's, it's, it's on there. It's just reaffirming what's there. You don't have to put that second condition in any, in a motion to approve. But it's just, it's just belt and suspenders.
Okay. Anybody have more comments or are we ready for motions? Soft and silent? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'm not because I'm voting against it, so.
You can make a motion and vote against it if you want. Um, Donna, do you want to make a motion if Kevin doesn't want?
Um, I can make a motion to approve application number 20 dash 03 of Graphic Impact Signs, Inc., agent for Big Y Foods Incorporated, owner, for the sign permit for new signage on the property located at 1313 Hot Meadow Street. With the condition that they need a administrative zoning approval permit.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Second by Diane. Any further comments? Kevin doesn't like it. Bruce?
I, I understand Kevin's concern and I have the same concern, except that it meets our regulations and, and, uh, my, my inclination is to support this and to raise the issue when we have a further discussion about the regulations. We're, uh, in the midst of trying to revise or considering revisions, so.
Okay. Donna? You made the motion.
I did. I'm good.
Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
Kevin. So it's five to one, approved, with Kevin the, uh, the center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Mike. Uh, the next item of business is a time extension for 80 Wilkett Road, which is Mike Gerard's, uh, property. Can you explain the situation, Mike?
Yeah. So, um, he's preparing to move over his operation to 80 Wilkett Road. Um, as part of the, the approval, he's got to demolish the existing buildings, build his new building, and he's, he's been looking, waiting on selling his property on Arnold's Boulevard. So that's what caused the, the fire, the delay from the initial approval. Um, it looks like he's going to start getting going on the final work over on Wilkett Road. The Stormwater Basin is in right now. He did, that was one of the first things he did. However, like I said, he's now at building demolition and construction of a new building. So he needs the extension for five years, which he's allowed as of, as of right. The, uh, the approval was about four and a half years ago now. Uh, it's coming up in May of this year.
Okay. So he's, he can get that extension as of right?
Correct.
So our vote, do we have to vote?
You still have to take, you still legally have to take a vote on it, but he's, he's allowed, he's, this is an as-of-right request of, of Mr. Gerard.
Okay. All right. Someone want to make a motion?
I, I just want a point of information. Uh, this five years that he's requested, when this starts to lapse, how many more five years can he have?
This is it. This is it.
By right. He could ask for extension. No.
No. He's going to the, so under statute, your site plans have a life of five years. If you don't complete the work within the five-year timeframe, you, the commission, the applicant has a right to request additional five years. Ten years is the cap. If he doesn't finish work in 10 years, the, the site plan's null and void. He has to come back to the commission to reaffirm an approval. And it couldn't get, uh, you know, like you said, Bruce, another five years added on to that 10.
Mike, um, the white-roofed building, is that part of the original plan? It's a plastic tur, cover.
Oh, yeah. That moved, that, that appeared over the weekend. Yeah, we're, we're working with that as you speak.
Okay. And then, um, what about all of the trailer storage? Does that allow?
It's an industrial zone. It's supposed to, he was supposed to basically shield view of the storage of materials. And that's what, when, when, if you were to fall the approved site plan, the building now would, 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 uh, screen a lot of the view to the rear. So, but we can talk to him about
I'm just looking at it from, you know, from the waste station there. You know, it, it's not bad because it is an industrial area, so you're not, it doesn't impose on a whole bunch of people. Um, but I was just wondering if that was going to be forever?
Yeah, he can, he can have the outdoor storage, but like I said, it's supposed to be screened, so he can't see it from the road. When the building's there and he's got a privacy fence there, you shouldn't be able to see everything that's in the back of shop.
If you're looking dead on, but you'll be able to see it from the sides as you're approaching the property.
I got to look at the plans. There may actually be fencing along the side property line, too. I can, I can get it, I can get a clarification for the next meeting.
How far down Wilkett is number eight?
He's right next to Phone On. Two doors down from the airport.
So he's in between there and the gardens or whatever they are.
Yeah, because you just have the farm field between it and the, and the recycling center.
Correct.
So it's, it is pretty visible because there's nothing on the farm, well, greenhouse. I know I'm giving him a hard time because, you know, it's a good business, but.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and give him his approval. I'm sure that he's working with Mike to get things done.
Oh, so I'll make a motion that we extend the, uh, that we give a five-year extension for the site plan for, uh, 80 Wilkett Road?
Fifteen dash fourteen.
Application fifteen dash what? No. Oh, fifteen dash fourteen? So it's five years? Okay.
Right. Any seconds?
I'll, go ahead.
Donna, Donna second it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Take care of six, nothing. Okay. Um, Mike, regulation update workshop and comments?
Yeah. So, uh, the changes were made from the last meeting with one actually addition is, should be uploaded to the packet. Um, it moved the home business section from other regulation to accessory uses in the residential zone because really it's an accessory use to have that to your house. So that just reaffirms the fact that it's a, it's clearly subordinate.
All right. I don't know how much further this is going to go on, but in line with what Dave already said, should we adjourn the meeting and go into workshop?
You could make, you could do that.
Yeah, I think we should.
Should I make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
And I'll second it.
You're second?
Yep.
Bruce, second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Six, I think we're adjourned. Okay.
Mike, now you're into workshop phase. Okay.